All right, welcome tonight to the regular board meeting of February 17th. Could I have our rule call, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mr. Levy?
Here.
Mr. Vedder?
Here.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Here. And if you would stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see we have no visitors tonight outside of the regular pool of suspects, so moving on to technology report with Mr. Hoffman.
No presentation?
No presentation tonight. And welcome, Mr. Blue, briefly.
I know, how about that?
All right.
It's been a hot night, ladies and gentlemen.
It's all good, man.
Nice to see you all. Just a little update on our network update. It's been going quite well. Still, real minor things that we have not been able to trace down and put a pin on. One of those is the phone system is not quite 100% integrated, but we're working with the companies to try and get that fixed. I know this year, Mrs. Hoffman's kind of gave us a little bit of leadership in the accelerated reader department, and I thought I'd throw a couple of numbers at you just for fun. This year, we've had 13,062 AR quizzes that were taken and passed of the 14,869. So, we're doing pretty good, 88% pass rate. The number that really gets me, we're only halfway through the year, a little over. So far, just the elementary, this is K4 I'm looking at, they've read 29,500,000 words. So, it's always kind of fun to look at those things. But other than that, any questions? Real short, real sweet?
That's great, thank you. All right, we are going to do our first. Erin, just because, you get to start.
I'll take it.
Thank you.
All right, the high school winter sports are quickly winding down. Girls' basketball ended their season last week at Patrick Henry in the sectional final. The boys varsity basketball team ended their regular season on Saturday, and then they take on Fairview this Friday evening at 7:00 PM, and that's here at home for the first round of tournament play. Tickets you have to purchase online, or you can pay cash at the door, but we are the tournament site this Friday. Our wrestling team performed extremely well this past Saturday at the GMC tournament. I want to give a huge congratulations to Baron Graver for earning the title of GMC champion in his weight class. And then our entire team really did well. They took third in the GMC this year. Keeson Bertollet and Owen Joyner both got second in their weight class. Braden Dix got third, and then Xavier Miller, Brendan Metz, Noah Campbell, and Shay Bauer all got fourth, so congratulations to all of our wrestlers. Our freshman boys' basketball team are competing in the GMC tournament tonight. They play at 7:00 PM at Tenora. They'll be taking on Wayne Trace. And then a note about ACT. Juniors have been working very hard for several months now. Their ACT test is Tuesday, March 11th, in the Fieldhouse. As you'll probably remember, this year, it's test optional, but the majority of our juniors here at Hicksville have opted to take the test. So, on March 11th, they will be permitted to leave early at lunchtime after their test is over. And I would like to give a shout out to three teachers who have been very instrumental in incorporating this ACT prep. Mrs. Lysit, Ms. Gurkin, and Mr. Payne. They have opened up their rooms for ACT prep sessions on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and now we've incorporated Wednesdays to get caught up a little bit during home base time, and they've been helping our juniors get through those sessions. Second round of innovative interviews with sophomores will be Thursday, March 6th, here at the high school. This is for the second semester group of financial management students, and then the finalists from this round will join the finalists of Semester 1 for the semifinals at PFW on March 19th. Annual senior coronation will be Saturday, March 8th, at the Huber at 6:00 PM. Our seniors have been meeting during home base times and outside of school as well to coordinate their skits, and we look forward to another great performance for this Hicksville tradition. It's always a good evening. Some of them have said that they're secret skits, and that I'm in a few of them, so it is cool to see that they get all excited and really plan them out. And then the dance, well, the annual dance will follow here at the high school from 8:00 to 10:30. Tickets will be $6 for that, sold at the door. And then more senior events, March 12th, our senior government class will be traveling to Columbus with Mr. Blue to tour the State House and the Ohio Supreme Court. And then the following week, they go to New York City for their senior trip, and that'll be March 19th to the 21st for that trip. And I think that's it for right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Highlander. Tristan?
We have kindergarten registration, March 6th and 7th, here at the school. Currently, we have 58 students scheduled for registration. All but 11 of these students come to us with preschool experience. We are very fortunate to have opened up four preschools. Preschool's here. It's, I'm excited to see, you know, where these kiddos are at. So, contact Tristan, the elementary office, if you still need to register. And just a reminder, on that day, our current readiness in kindergarten students will not have school, so our teachers can be available for the registration. We do have family literacy night coming up on Monday, March 17th, from 4:30 to 6:30 in the commons and the elementary gym. This year's theme is Camp Read a Lot, and so it's going to be a lot of different camping activities and stations that parents and families can join. This is a free event, so there'll be dinner served from 4:30 to 5:00, hot dogs and french fries. And some of the stations will include, like, reading directions to make s'mores. There will be a game station where families can play games with their kiddos. I'm going to try something new by encouraging, like, teachers and people, parents, to be bringing in maybe an older book from home that maybe their kiddos don't read anymore and have a little book exchange. Hopefully have some tents set up in the gymnasium, so just a fun, fun night. Mark your calendars. Second grade and fourth grade students will be performing their music program for parents on Thursday, March 20th. Second grade's at 5:30, and fourth grade's at 6:30.
Okay, good evening. In January, we held our mid-year MTSS/RTI conferences for students in kindergarten through fourth grade. MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Supports, and RTI stands for Response to Intervention. Their framework's designed to provide targeted academic and behavior supports based on individual student needs. These conferences involve a team of staff members, where we review information and data, identify students needing additional interventions, and determine what are the appropriate supports for those students. Once those new interventions or supports are decided on and put in place, there's ongoing progress monitoring to evaluate the effectiveness of those interventions. In September, I was asked to join a NEW Defiance MAP, which stands for Multi-Agency Planning Team. It supports students transitioning into adulthood, specifically those students who are on plans, whether or not they're 504 plans or IEP plans. The team includes different administrators from around the area, local school districts, representatives from local and state agencies, such as the Defiance Board of Developmental Disabilities, Opportunities for Ohioans with Disabilities, and O'Callaghan. With this plan, or with this team, we're planning to do a family event this spring. It's going to provide valuable information to families of students on IEPs or 504 plans ages 14 through high school. The goal of it is to give families information on a range of adult transition pathways, programs, and resources. Families can look forward to learning about transition agency programs, vocational training for their students, college-bound students, who will can receive additional supports from these agencies, and I'll be sharing more of those details next month. As I've been part of the MAP team, I have learned all sorts of information on what agencies are out there to support our students. I wanted to make sure that our intervention staff was informed of all these programs that are out there for our students that can be started from the age of 14 on. So, I invited different agencies, such as the Ohioans, the OOD, Ohioans, sorry, lost my train of thought there, and the Defiance Board of DD, and even our Work Transition Program, to come in and talk to our intervention specialists about what their programs can offer to our students. My goal with this is just to equip our educators with as much knowledge and as many resources as possible to help students achieve their academic and career goals.
Thank you, Jen. Any comments or questions for the admin team at this moment? Eric?
Nothing real exciting for four county right now, but there is a board meeting this coming Thursday at 5:30, and we're going to learn more about breaking ground on the new building and all that fun stuff. So, this Thursday will be a fun meeting.
Okay, so we'll get the skinny on that at our next meeting. Good. And Mr. Hunterman?
Mine's brief also. A big shout out to Mr. Hoffman, I'm glad he's here, so he knows I gave him a plug. But every, it's every year now, it used to be every other year, we used to do, we have to do the civil rights data collection report. It takes a good day and a half to two days, and I'm really grateful that Matt helps me out with that, because he runs the Power School end of it while I plug the numbers and stuff in, and it's a good team event, and I appreciate you for helping with that. Mr. Hoffman? Mr. Highlander and I attended the Hicksville Chamber Luncheon Learn Meeting last week, and Chris Yoder was there, who spoke on behalf of the Defiance County Foundation, and presented at that meeting as well. So, that was a nice time to get together with all the business owners uptown. Attended the ESC meeting a month ago, and that's something that happens every month. And tomorrow, Mike and I will be going to the ESC for a combined superintendent and treasurer meeting, so that's it.
All right, thank you. We will be moving on to minutes and financials, so I need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Galen, thank you. Eric, thank you. So, we have the minutes from the organizational and regular board meetings on January 13th. We have the treasurer's consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of January 31st, 2025, financial statements for January of 2025, to approve amended official certificate of estimated sources for fiscal year 2025 as presented, total general fund resources of $19,347,445.42, and total resources for all funds of $24,288,67.45. To approve fiscal year 2025 permanent appropriations as presented, total general fund appropriations of $14,477,964.36, and total appropriations for all funds of $17,233,829.92. We have a motion to transfer the remaining balance of $859.18 from the High School Drama Fund, line item ending in 9455, to the High School Musical Fund, the fund number ending in 9450. And we will approve the following then and now certificate for Power School for $3,706.60. It is an annual fee. We also will accept the following donations: $500 from the PTO for middle school incentives, and $500 for the anonymous donation for the Noah Carrickson Scholarship Fund. Okay, discussion? Anything that you have extra for us?
Not specifically with what's right there, but just a real brief update. We've got our school district income tax that came in at the end of January for the last third quarter of calendar year 2024. Over the prior year, we were up 5.24%. That's good. On the other hand, we're still down from last year, we're down 0.83%, so we've got one more quarter to get above water, so I'm hoping we will come, that payment will come at the end of April.
Okay.
Do you have any idea when we'll know about the governor and the fair school funding, if we're gonna, if they're gonna fully fund year five and six?
Well, by annual budget, it won't be approved until June 30th, or at least that's by law. It has, in my 25-plus years, I don't think it ever was approved before June 30th. Once or twice, it got delayed even after that, but I would expect to know by June 30th. There's still some times figuring out kind of the weeds of what everything is all about, can take some time, but the governor's proposal is out there, the House is going to be working on it, eventually go to the Senate, and they'll go back and forth, and eventually go back to the governor for approval, so we'll see where it ends up. But there's two main things that I'm hoping, as far as the fair school funding plan, the base cost increase right now, which basically is tied into inflationary measures, is set at 2020, and if they don't change that, this is going through June 30th of 2027, so that's quite a while. Actually, I should take it back, it's set right now for 2022. But if they don't update it, let's say, for 2024, I mean, we could be sitting here about five years out. And then there's the phase-in of fair school funding plan. Currently, this year, it's at 67%. The hope is it'll be phased into 83% in this upcoming fiscal year, and then 100% in fiscal year 27. The governor's proposal has the phase-in, but not the base cost increases. So, time will tell.
Which is typical of government and money.
That's the way it always is.
All right, any other discussion? If not, rule call, please.
Okay. Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0 with one absent. It should be noted that Mr. Levy will get here when he can. Employment of certified staff, I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Galen. So, Jamie Altman, structured literacy teacher to advance to bachelor's plus 150 on the salary scale. It's nice to move up. Retirement resignation from Brent Souffel as a middle school teacher with his last day to be May 31st, 2025. Retirement resignation from Dave Blue as high school teacher with his last day to be May 31st, 2025. Retirement resignation from Linda Houston as elementary intervention specialist for kindergarten and first grade with her last day to be May 31st, 2025. Resignation from Jenna Gurkin as cafeteria cook with her last day to be February 28th, 2025. Erin Montgomery is to sub two days a week as elementary guidance counselor during Madeline Bragg's maternity leave, starting in April of 2025. Heather Scott as a certified substitute for the 24-25 school year. Donat Benar as a certified substitute for the 24-25 school year. Supplemental contracts for the 24-25 school year include Jennifer Cunningham as assistant softball, John Adams as co-assistant softball, Jay Chamberlain as co-assistant softball, Ryan Meiser as co-assistant baseball at 40%, Phil Handy as co-assistant baseball at 35%, and Garrett France, co-assistant baseball at 25%. James Eggly for assistant track, Pam Payne for assistant track, Michael Myers as head junior high boys track, and Jamie Altman as head junior high girls track. Volunteers for the 24-25 school year include Becca Harvey as volunteer assistant softball, Ashley Doctor as volunteer assistant track, Maddie Sebenauer as volunteer assistant track, Riley Figgins as volunteer assistant track. So, a lot of assistants, a lot of help for our coaches, because coaching doesn't get any easier. Any other discussion on these items?
Just a big shout out to our three retirees who are retiring after over 30 years of service.
Many years, yes.
A lot of years, so they've been great assets, they'll be missed, and moving on to retirement.
Yeah, yes. Happy days for them. All right, rule call, please, Mike.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0 with one absent. We are going to move on to the employment of classified staff, and I just wanted to remind you that we have an addendum that we're going to put in here also, I think all of you have it. So, do you need a motion for that?
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Jen. Letitia Psalm, effective March 3rd, 2025, for cafeteria cook with five years' experience. Cindy Sprenn at classified substitute for 2024-25 school year. The addendum states, do we have to do this as a separate item?
We could probably add it just into one.
I thought we could just put it, because it's in the same category, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a resignation from Christina Tadson as custodian with her last day to be February 28th, 2025. Discussion? All right, rule call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0, one absent. Moving on to services and agreements, a motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Galen. Revised foundation deduction agreement, service agreement with Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center per Ohio Revised Code 3313.845. This agreement covers the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th of 2025. The total projected cost is being reduced from $875,150.91 to $635,857.48. Ooh, we like to see things go down.
How did that happen?
Well, the prior two years escalated a lot. We went up from like $565,600 to like $875 going into this year. Part of it is our students at the IEC, the, we get billed for a number of students there and the number of days there, and that is down. There were some other multi-handicap services that we're not receiving this year, that's quite a bit there. The way they are gifted coordinator and curriculum person there, was it curriculum? Was Jane due?
Curriculum coordinator.
Curriculum coordinator. Those positions, the way they calculate it, went down about $10,000. So, there was a combination of that and a few other things all in there. I'm hoping that we don't see big spikes again.
It was meteoric there for a while.
Yes.
It was really taking off.
It really went up, so this was kind of really nice to see a large decrease.
Any other discussion besides this kind of nice news? All right, rule call, please, Mike.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0 with one absent. Moving on to other business, a motion, please?
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll second.
Galen, thank you. Resolution number 2025-05, resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Policy 2265, protections of individual beliefs, affiliations, ideals, or principles of political movement and ideology. Resolution authorizing 2025 to 2026 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. 2025-26 school year calendar, and FFA to state convention, April 30th to May 2nd, 2025, for the first time in many years from Hicksville High School. So, discussion?
Just wanted to...
I was just gonna say, I was super excited commencement, not on Memorial Day.
I was just gonna mention that, that's the biggest change in the calendar, is that that's moved to a week later, getting that off of Memorial Day, and, yeah.
Just wanted to note that on the update of the tax rates, is that the bond retirement fund for the construction of this building here has been reduced down to 3.35 mils. So, that has pretty steadily, actually, this time was quite a big jump, it was a four-something, I can't, 4.25 maybe, so about a whole mil dropped off. That should be a little savings, that will be a little savings for our taxpayers. Hopefully, they see that, but other things can affect what they pay, so, but from school district standpoint, there was that decrease on mileage, 3.35. I think originally it was over seven, 7.05 maybe, so...
That's awesome.
That's good news.
A lot of good financial news at the moment, I should knock on. Okay, I know. Any other, any other comments? If not, rule call, please.
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0 with one absent. Any old business to be discussed? We don't have any unannounced guests before we go into executive...
We have one discussion topic.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we do. Yeah, because we want to clarify about school pickup, right?
Yes.
All right, so, yeah. Would you like to discuss the expectations of...
The expectations are the same that they've been for years, and we, you know, we expect people to pull forward for the simple reason to unload more at one time and load more at one time. And it's common that, you know, I stood out there this morning in the zero-degree weather and watched, and parents want to stop right at the end of that sidewalk, because it's cold, and they don't want the kids to have to walk that far. Totally get it, but when they do that, it affects everybody. So, it's just better if everybody just pulls forward, we load all, seven, eight cars at one time, seven, eight pull away, and we pull seven, eight more up instead of just three at a time, so it's as simple as that. That's the expectation, both drop off and pick up. And sometimes, people don't like that, when we motion them to move forward, so...
It's funny that this has come up. I was sitting, I was picking up in the loop the other day, and actually took a picture. There's, there's one vehicle every time. So, there'll be a gap, there'll be a hole up there, right? And this is a big safety concern for me, so I'm glad it's come up. So, I'm sitting there, way back in the line, there's an opening in this car, it's like Mario Kart, around everybody, flies into the opening, picks their kid up, and flies off. And that's, that, you know, that could be problematic if a kid, because there's a lot going on, right?
We have a few kids that go around the front of the car to get in and out of the other side.
Right.
So, that is the exact reason why we try to ask them to pull forward.
Yeah.
That, or they'll use the second lane and then have to walk through, I don't like that either, so we work on that, but, you know, there's a lot of cars that drop off, there's a lot of cars that pick up, and, you know, it's, sometimes you get a new person coming through, and...
And a lot of people that are reminded, and...
Right.
And for my clarification, I think this came up with like a preschool-aged child, that, so they were trying to buckle him in the car seat, but what is the proper, I mean, if you are new and you have a preschool-aged kid, and your kid crawls in the car seat before they're buckled in, I mean, should they be buckled in before they move, or pull forward? What's the expectation there?
Well, typically, you know, when everybody pulls forward, loading seven cars is going to take a minute, there's plenty of time to get that kid buckled into the seat. When they, when they stop, not pull forward, then that is going to affect everybody behind them, so we just ask that people pull forward, and, yeah, they need to buckle the little ones in the car. Now, I know that there's some people that will pull over to the, in the parking lot a little ways, and then they get out and buckle their kid into the car there. Absolutely, they should never pull out from the school and start driving without their kid buckled up, but we're not asking anybody to do that, of course.
And so, that's, I, the letter that was written, I didn't quite understand that comment, that I, that we ask you to pull over a few feet... a few feet to complete that task.
Into the no parking zone, right by where the cars are at. And in this particular case...
I'm not understanding. So...
So like if the cars are, the staff parking lot's right here, there's a no parking zone right here. So I mean literally parking right here and just moving right over.
Where the lines are, by the lights.
Yeah, the hash marks at the end of the park. Pull over by that one hole and they'll stop their car.
In the elementary loop, you're saying?
No, in the middle school, high school.
That's why, that's what I wasn't getting, because I was thinking they were in the elementary loop. And that's why I was confused when you say to pull over, because I'm thinking there's no room in the elementary loop to pull over. That's why I was asking for clarification, because I wasn't understanding.
And we do have, like, our preschool teachers are more than happy to help buckle kids in, to help it go quicker. I don't even mind if it does take a minute or so, but some of them are stepping out of the car. Oh, hi, oh, give me hugs here. Let's get your backpack off. And that's what we've asked to try to refrain from that. So some of those statements were accurate.
So maximum efficiency, maximum safety, yeah.
They're like little cockroaches. I mean, when those cars stop, those kids, pew. And, and it is, it is scary because some, you know, some are trying to go past the sidewalk into the grass. I mean, I've caught kids doing that. I mean, and there's only, there's only two of us out there. So it's, it's, it's very efficient when it's efficient. And then when people stop, I mean, I, I had to have a conversation with two grown men because the one that zoomed around the other car in the, in the fall, I mean, they got out and they were ready to fight. I mean, it is, it is, it is crazy. And it does go very quickly once we get going. But if one person stops two or three car lengths short, it just stops the whole rhythm. It messes the whole rhythm up.
So just to clarify, so what you're saying, like, so you want the whole length of the sidewalk to be filled with seven or so cars, right? Like, you're talking in the elementary loop? So everybody comes in, we got seven cars, everybody can buckle their kids in, and then all seven move out, and a whole another seven move in behind them. So again, everybody has time to buckle, everybody has time, but it's that continuous process and not...
And...
Two spots.
It's a simple thing of people not wanting to pull forward.
And if they see their kiddo coming out the door, and I'm asking you to go down because there's three car lengths right here, they want to, some not... A lot of them don't. I mean, really, there's, there's a handful of three to five people, honestly. And they'll want, they'll stop, and they'll, but my kid's right there. I get that. Let's just keep going, but...
I think it's hilarious to make mine walk all the way down.
Well, and it's funny, like, I've almost like turned it into a game. Let's see if you can beat mommy and daddy, and they take off running. I mean, most of the kids know how the rhythm of it goes.
It happened yesterday, same thing, because I drop off in the high school, middle school, high school. And it absolutely amazes me that they are next to the sidewalk. They don't let them out because they want the two spots in front of the door. And I'm like, you know, if we all walk just a little bit.
Thanks for asking for details, because my kids aren't old enough to have to worry about the drop-off thing yet. So I honestly had no idea how the whole situation was even supposed to work. So here in the, you know, the seven cars pull up together, everybody keeps it tight, seven kids get in or out, whatever the kids say, and move on. That makes sense.
What's nice is we have the numbers. So we have somebody that stands out at the stop sign. And as they're pulling in at the stop sign, she's touching the numbers on her phone, which all of the teachers then have their smartboards on. So when that number lights up, you know, JoJo is number 17. And when she sees 17 light up, she goes outside. So by the time that she gets down there, I mean, it's, they're coming out the door and just getting in a car.
The system works great as long as it's followed. So, you know, it gets a little more chaotic because the person that's taking the numbers by 3:03 is gone, obviously. And then there's a lane open, and then it's Mario Kart.
Yes, it is.
You start, you know, like trying to...
And I don't try to police that one. I just do the other.
I'd like to bring my own comb someday.
On a related but slightly dissimilar note, what about, how is that two-way traffic working? Is it working well to have that place open back there?
Oh, that makes a difference, yeah, absolutely.
That made a huge difference.
Yeah, out towards 18, absolutely. That makes a big difference, yeah.
It just seems as if it's less congested after school.
It does, it relieves a lot. You know, pickup and drop off, you know, the traffic and stuff out. There's still traffic out on two. And, but if, what, for five minutes, seven minutes?
It's so much better though.
Yeah, it's not really that long. And, you know, we're just, you know, we all work together, and it's safer for the kids that way. We don't, you know, on another note, we see lots of parents coming through on their phones, and, you know, I'm like, you know, I usually get one finger back then too. It's not this one. But, I mean, you know, it's just trying to keep the kids safe. That's all we're trying to do. So we'll keep working at it.
Okay. All right, any further conversation on this topic? Thanks for bringing it to our attention, Eric. I appreciate that. Before we go into executive session, I have March 17th as our next meeting date. So St. Patty's Day. I should save this outfit for then. At 5:30, everybody okay with that, March 17th? Okay. And then we are going into executive session. We'll give it about 6:10, so if people need to take a break, they may. And there will be no action taken after this meeting, so everyone is, that is free to go is free to go. All right, so we will need a motion to go into executive session?
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
All right, at 6:06, and roll call.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0, one absent.
And of course, when we come back, we will just adjourn.
Adjourn our regular meeting, yes.
What's the reason for the executive session?
Oh, thank you, number one.